All right, we are recording and we are live.
Great, thank you very much. Good morning, it is Monday, November 30th, 2020, 10:00 AM, and this is the regularly scheduled city council work session. If you're joining us, thank you very much. We appreciate you tuning in and watching and seeing how your local government works. So on work sessions, we just go straight into our agenda, and there's no voting at work sessions or public comment. It's just an opportunity for council to hear from staff on some ongoing projects. And anything that requires a vote will be on an upcoming agenda with notice, notification. Okay, the first thing on our agenda this morning are planning commission applicant interviews. We have two candidates who currently serve on the planning commission, but both of them, their terms are up, and so they are reapplying to be on our planning commission. And so we will hear from them, and it feels like we just interviewed Ms. Phoebe Benzinger, but she was just filling in for the end of a previous slot. And so that's why she's before us again, is because that slot, that term ended, and now she's applying again. So with that, I welcome Phoebe Benzinger and Jan Chastain. And I think I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager, Anne Morgan Thaler, who will say a little bit more before we jump in.
Thank you, I don't have much to add, actually. Just that we're so thankful for these volunteers who give their time in order to do these very important duties for our city and all of our communities. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions for me about the planning commission or about the roles, then I'm happy to answer them.
Great, any questions before we talk to the applicants? Any questions about how planning commission works or our role to appoint? Okay, great, well then, good morning to our two applicants. Janet, I don't know if you have the ability to turn on a camera. If not, no big deal, but you can unmute yourself, or Greg Story will unmute you, and we'll just say good morning to both of you. Good morning. Thanks for joining us. Council, do you have any questions for either of our applicants?
I don't believe so, we've had the opportunity to speak with them before.
Great, well then, maybe I'll turn it over to each of them to just, I'll just pose. Tell us a little bit about why you want to continue your work on the planning commission and how you have found your role and responsibilities thus far.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Janet, I'm glad to start. Actually, as Mayor Bynum said, I am just really, just getting my feet wet for this, and I've enjoyed it a lot. I've learned so much, and I appreciate all the help and guidance that Anne, it ends at every planning commission meeting, and I appreciate that. And it's, you know, the learning curve is steep. I feel like I've jumped in with both feet. I look forward to actually serving a full term. I think it's, as weird as it sounds, it's the process of learning and engaging with different people. And, and what I appreciate from the city planning, like Amy Sharp and Anne, is there's not, no decision is made lightly. I mean, they really take into account things that I would have never thought you would have to think about going into that. So anyway, I would appreciate if I could be reappointed. I feel like I, I really do enjoy this, yep.
Thank you. Janet? Anything you want to tell us about your experience thus far and your reasons for wanting to continue? I can see you're currently muted. Let's get you on, there you go, good morning.
Okay, good morning to all of you, more Mary Bynum and to all council members, Mr. Bell. It's been an amazing couple of years, steep learning curve, as Phoebe says. It's not as simple as one might think. There's a lot of dynamics involved in the, the planning commission and their relationship with, with the new planning, planning committee. I'm very impressed with Amy and the way she's come on. She does an excellent job of presenting, and we, so it's up to us to go from there with what she gives us. And I, we have a very strong commission, I think. A lot of different personalities, different approaches, but I think we all are really committed to the community of Montrose and, and the part we play in that. It isn't as simple as it looks. You have the, I've been amazed at the, what we have to learn from the people that attend. So we're always balancing the local community with Amy's input and with our own commission questions. So I would really very much look forward to spending another term as I show a true commitment to this group and to helping us with the resonations and the variances and those kinds of things that help our community move forward in a well-planned manner.
Great, thank you very much. Any follow-up questions from our council or comments?
I would just comment that this is an incredibly valuable role that you play for our community, and, and I appreciate both of you kind of re-upping and being committed to this. So thank you for all you do, for your contributions, and look forward to another term for both of you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much for the work that you're doing on behalf of the city and the citizens. We appreciate it. Looking at my calendar, my guess would be that this will formally be in front of council for a vote on our December 15th agenda. I'm seeing some nodding, so that's usually how it works, is we'll have a formal vote at that time. And there, there's really, thank you very much for joining us this morning, and feel free to join us on the 15th, but there's really no need to. I don't anticipate that there's a, any, you know, interview point at that time. We'll thank you for your service and we'll take a vote. So please don't feel like you need to set your calendar for that evening. Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agendas for discussion items, we have, the first one is an intergovernmental agreement with Montrose Recreation District, and I will turn it over to the city's grant coordinator, Kendall Kramer, for this item. Good morning, Kendall.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I'm going to share my screen real quick, so you can see the document here. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Perfect. So, before you this morning is the intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Recreation District, which you will be considering at the December 15th regular city council meeting. The city of Montrose and the Montrose Recreation District, we have an intergovernmental agreement to kind of streamline services for efficiency and cost savings for our taxpayers, and we provide different services, including facilities, IS services, and others. So, again, this is up for your consideration. In the past, it's come to you in the first part of the next year, but this year, we've gotten it to you a little bit earlier. So, and I've included in your packet is a streamlined, or excuse me, a redlined comparison of the changes. There are very few changes to this agreement for this year. And so here, first is just a little breakdown of our calendar, our schedule. Of course, today being the 30th here at work session. This will then go to the REC district board for their consideration on December 10th, and then back at council on December 15th with a proposed effective date agreement of January 1st. So again, I've met with the Recreation District, Mary and Jeremy, which are awesome over there, and we don't really have too many changes. Here's just a brief summary of those, but I'll drop down to the actual agreement, and we can go through each one of these.
The only question I have, Kendall, is that we're picking up the weekday restroom cleaning, and what was the logic and reasoning behind that?
Sure, the city completes the regular cleaning throughout on the weekends, and that, so I think, I believe, and Jim, if he's on the call, can speak to that, but I think it was just to be more efficient and more practical, to make sure that it's, it's being done, so it's less confusion. I, I think that's the reason. Jim, do you happen to be on this call? If he wants to speak to that, but I can drop down. We'll get to that in just a few minutes, as I go through these, and we can, maybe Jim can chime in on that. But I believe it was just basically to streamline it and to make it more efficient, cost efficient, rather than having two different groups doing it. Just the city will take care of it.
Yeah, I can add to that, Kendall, if you'd like.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
So, I guess that was a change, yeah, like Kendall said, to kind of streamline it, but it is, this year was a good example in that the REC district didn't use those fields at all. And so the city ended up covering what the REC district normally would have. Because in the past, the REC district would have covered the, you know, a portion of that, either the weekday or weekend services on the restroom there, because they are the main user of that area. But it is our property, our facility, and it's a little bit, it does streamline it to use a single contractor to do the janitorial services rather than two different ones. And, and this year was just kind of eye-opener to that in that they didn't use the fields, and so it came down to us needing to do it all the time anyway. And so that's why we're proposing to just take that on ourselves. Again, it's our, our facility, so it just makes sense for our contractor to clean it.
Great, that makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So, beginning on, it's actually in your packet, would be page 20 of the PDF, but it's the redline version. Of course, changing of the date would be the first thing right there that you see, just changing it to 2021. And I'll just scroll through here, and wherever I see the red markings is where there's been a change. We're here. Under Cerise Fields, just changing some language, did say description, wasn't Exhibit A. Exhibit A is actually just a map, so we just changed it to depicted, and so a very minor change. Not really changing the agreement or the terms of the agreement. There's that maintenance under Cerise Fields that Jim just spoke to, that change that we will cover all weekday and weekend cleaning, not just the weekend cleaning to streamline those services. We have clarified that the non-growing season begins, rather than contemplated, we have set it as a definite that it begins on November 1st of each year and concludes on March 1st of the following year. And so the city shall maintain Cerise Fields after the district has ceased using those fields for programs during the non-growing season. So just clarifying, that date is from November 1st through March 1st. Again, just to change on the wording, under I depicted rather than described. The city also provides trash and recycling services to the REC district at the Field House, the Community Recreation Center, Holly Park, and McNeil Fields. Originally, we said locations at no cost, but there is a cost. It's just being credited back to the city, and that credit is $7,230.76. And that is the same, I believe, the same cost as the previous year. The district shall provide the city with a credit equivalent to $7,230.76, it might have actually went up a little bit, I believe that was the one that went up 5%. So I can show you that on the Schedule A. But that is the actual cost to deliver those trash and recycling services to those different areas, the REC Center, Holly Park, and McNeil Fields. Excuse me, clarification, McNeil Fields, I believe we said it was McNeil Park in the previous agreement, but we made sure to use the correct name, McNeil Fields. So that has been changed as well. And of course, that credit goes towards the annual pass payment for city employees and our city council for the REC Center. Excuse me. We also have a collective sales tax for the Montrose Recreation District, and so we provide that at no cost, but an annual value of $2,700 is what we figure that to be. And so that is also used towards the annual pass for city employees and council. That cost is calculated, it's kind of tricky, but it's based on the number of families within the city that work for the city of Montrose, greater than four, that live outside of the Recreation District. So it's kind of a difficult thing to explain, but that's how that number is derived. It's based on the cost, because they live outside the district, those costs are a little more expensive, and so that is reflective of that. Changing of the term through December 31st of 2021. Under the future agreement termination, we have changed that under Part, it looks like 13. And so, we removed the automatic renewal language. In fact, that should have been removed under the previous agreement. We do bring this to council every year now. So we've removed that language and added some future agreement language that states if the district wishes to enter into a contract for 2022 with the city, the district must notify the city no later than October 15th of 2021. And so that would just enable us to be prepared to, you know, to know whether or not we're going to be providing those services for the following year. Changed the name of the mayor as well as the representatives for the Recreation District. No changes to Exhibit A, Holly Park was already included on there in the previous agreement. Of course, that park being renovated, so no changes to that. Again, a change, rather than park, it is McNeil Fields, the correct name. Reflective of the agreement above, again, no, changing the name there. We took out that at no cost, there is a cost, it's just being credited for those trash and recycling services. No changes to Exhibit C under Finance. There was a change added to Exhibit D under Information Services and Specifications. We state that the city will assess, will assess a 3% administrative fee for management of procurement or billing of hardware purchase for MRD and long-distance phone service. We've actually already been charging that 3% fee that's on their billing form and our, our quarterly, or quarterly reports that we do. It's just wasn't spelled out in the document. So if we order a computer or hardware for the REC district, there is a 3%, 3% administrative fee on top of that that is charged. Just some minor changes under Fleet Services. Just to clarify that. The city will build district on a quarterly basis, not a monthly basis. At the end of each quarter, I do the shared services billing and send that out. So, changed that to quarterly. Under Schedule A, sorry, move this over here. Don't have dual screens at home, so I have to move my little images around. Hours should be tracked in each shared service and communicated to the district on a quarterly basis, as stated above. And then we'll report and communicate total expenses for the quarter. We removed the section that said that the total annual, the total estimated annual cost of the agreement would be in this document. It's kind of hard to do that, to figure out what the total estimated annual cost is, because they change per quarter. So we just removed that language. And it looks like we moved that section there up above. And then, an explanation or clarification on how those costs for recycling and trash services are calculated, just stating that there was a 5% increase in the cost to provide these services for calendar year 2021. That's an actual cost to deliver those services. And then, the schedules for the different departments or services that we provide were updated. These are based on the hourly billing rate. So some of them have gone up, some of them have gone down. It really depends on the position and their salaries. So you can see that some of them, again, have gone up, some have gone down, even if just a little bit. So, under Table 3, Facility Services and Costs Schedule gives you an idea of some of the equipment that the REC district may utilize. Sometimes, an operator is required for that equipment, and so there's a $35 per hour expense for that. We also provide sweeping, parking lot sweeping for the REC district. So that's included in there, if they want additional sweeping. And then here are the new costs for the trash and recycling services, the monthly rates, and these rates have gone up about 5% from last year. We have removed network design after hours. That is not a service that we provide, apparently. So that has been removed from the agreement. And then there's that 3% administrative fee that has been added, which gets you to that 1618 amount for long distance, an estimate for long-distance phone calls. The fee for the phone system has gone up. I'm not sure why it doesn't show what the original one, I believe it was $4 flat, but it has gone up to $4.35. It was $4 even. Thank you, Greg. And then, no other changes to the agreement. So, very minor changes, the only, I guess you could say, little bit bigger change would be the restroom facilities, cleaning and maintenance of that down there, that the city will take over for weekday and weekend cleaning. With that being said, I can take any questions, and I'm not sure, I can't see if Jeremy Master or Mary Steinbacher are on the call, but if they are, if they have anything to say. I'd really enjoy working with them, and a very smooth process this year to, to go through the agreement and make sure that it benefits both parties.
Great, thank you so much for your work, and I especially appreciate that this year, we're looking at it before it begins instead of looking at it in January. And I know it's been a busy year, and yet you were able to move this up in the, the calendar of the workflow. So, much appreciate that. And an explanation of all the little changes, and the big changes, I guess are really, I mean, restroom cleaning on weekdays is the biggest change. So that's, I think, not that big a change. It looks like things are working really well, and I appreciate that these, these kinds of intergovernmental agreements and shared services really benefit the taxpayers in the end. And really appreciate that these two government organizations working together to deliver a product at the lowest cost, because ultimately, it's our community that benefits. And I see Counselor Frank, we have a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the redline version. It really helps to see the side-by-side numbers. One small little housekeeping thing for me, that would it be possible next time to put a space between your numbers when you redline and the, and the new and the old number? Because looking at the document, sometimes it gets a little confusing having the numbers stacked like that. Just a space between them would help me see and understand those numbers a little more quickly.
The numbers in the cost schedule, under the Schedule A?
Anywhere you have numbers where you have the red line marked out and the new number beside it.
Sure.
Just a, a space between there would help me see that a little bit easier.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
It's kind of a tricky thing, but.
No, I can do that, I can certainly do that for you, no problem.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anything else from my fellow council members, questions or comments? Great, thank you so much for that work.
Thank you.
We'll move on, and we'll see that formally at an upcoming city council meeting for a vote.
That is correct, on December 15th, that will be up for vote.
Yep, perfect. Okay, next item for discussion is also for you, Mr. Kramer, and that is our Coronavirus Relief Fund allocation update. And these are the federal monies that flowed through the state and, and then were given out to counties and cities. And this is an update on how the city of Montrose has been using those funds. So, take it away.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So again, I just wanted to provide you with an update of where we're at with our Coronavirus Relief Fund dollars that we received. So as you remember, we entered into an agreement with the county to apply for those funds, and we did receive an allocation of about $1.1 million. And these funds have to be used to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic health emergency, and they have to be utilized or spent by December 30th of 2020. So, and feel free to stop me along the way if you have any questions at all. To date, we've incurred approximately $826,361. Seeking reimbursement is an ongoing effort, so I continue to do that. And so that's why I say incurred, because we have not received all of our reimbursement back yet, but we are working on that. It's quite a lengthy ordeal. But we have, again, spent $826,000, which includes $456,000 in grants that we provided through our grant program that we created to assist our local nonprofit community organizations and our childcare providers here in town. We also have provided a little over $100,000 to the Montrose County School District to assist with distance learning and creating space for that. So we did do that. And then about $264,000 in internal COVID-19 expenses. So for the childcare and the nonprofit program, we've provided, again, approximately 34 grants, actually about 38 grants as of now, 34 different organizations. And this has been used to provide financial assistance to these organizations to respond to the pandemic, and they've used it for a variety of purposes. Some of the nonprofits, they've actually done COVID-19 testing. They've had to do improvements to accommodate patients, such as the hospital, for example. Technology purchased for teleworking or to interact with their clients and customers to make sure that that's safe. Personal protective equipment, lots of masks, hand sanitizer, disinfectant foggers, Plexiglas, all, all different types of personal protective equipment or measures to mitigate and keep folks safe. Cleaning and sanitation supplies. We have reimbursed nonprofits for meal delivery services that they've provided, whether that's to seniors or for students here in Montrose. Purchases of indoor and outdoor furniture for some of our businesses. As you've seen around town, there's TP's that have gone up, and we have begun to purchase some furniture using those funds for that, for those spaces. Most of it being plastic furniture, that sort of thing. And then, as far as internal expenses, we've purchased a number of technology upgrades, including laptops, as well as software to make, make jobs easier, as well as to do teleworking and meetings such as this. We're purchasing equipment for HR, or excuse me, software, as well as for the clerk's office. We've also purchased personal protective equipment, both for our staff and as well as hand sanitizer, which can be used by the public when they come in. And so all of those things tend to add up. COVID-19 communications, the advertising that we've done to promote businesses and how to be safe, that is all charged to that. We did provide a contribution to the Montrose County Flu Shot Clinic to keep people healthier this winter. Reimbursement for salaries of substantially dedicated staff. That's primarily been our police chief. Public safety personnel are considered substantially dedicated. And so that is one individual that's been able to be reimbursed for those expenses. Small business assistance relief efforts, again, that's things like purchasing tables and chairs. Processing fees for business assistance loans through Region 10. We provided a number of business assistance loans at the, at the beginning of the pandemic or the emergency. So there was a fee for those processing, excuse me, a fee for processing those loans. And then, we anticipate, based on these numbers, using approximately $89,000 in remaining funds for internal expenses, including technology purchases, additional PPE, cleaning supplies. There was a grant match for the South First Street Plaza. The vast majority of that plaza was funded through a CDOT grant with a, I believe it was a 5% match, so very minimal. Small business assistance efforts, such as the TP installation, as well as outdoor furniture. I have in this memo that the remaining CARES Act dollars will be distributed to our existing nonprofit and childcare providers that had applied under our program. Most of the grant applications were not funded in full, just because we didn't know how many that we would get. And so there is an opportunity to go back to that. But really, I wanted to also open this up to council, excuse me, to see what their interests are in using those remaining funds. Based on this morning, we have around $135,000 to $160,000 in PV, or excuse me, in CARES Act funds that can be used. We can either, there's a couple of different options that are viable options. We can continue to provide our nonprofits and childcare entities funds, continue to do that, give them more funding if they've had a verifiable revenue loss, which is. If they've had a verifiable revenue loss, which is is key um to using those funds. Or another opportunity is to forgive the small business loans that we gave out very earlier in the pandemic, very early in the pandemic. Uh, and those totaled around a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Um, so there's two viable options. Um, we're certainly open to to get the thoughts and the direction from city council on. How they best see to utilize the remaining funds. Um, and of course, all these funds again have to be spent by December thirtieth of this year. Uh, any remaining funds, which we'd like to attempt to avoid, have to go back to the US Treasury. Um, so with that, um I can answer any questions about what we've done with the funding um and go from there.
Thank you very much. I know some communities are looking at businesses that um were particularly impacted and had a really noticeable loss of revenue, not just in. April and May, um but through the entire thing. Businesses that could never open and never saw the ability to recover, for example. Um, theaters, movie theaters and events. So are we? Um, do we have the ability to look at businesses that were particularly impacted and and perhaps never had an opportunity to recover, no matter how hard they worked?
Yeah, I think, yes, we could. Um, I think it's a, right now it might be a somewhat of a capacity issue because we're kind of under a tight deadline. To get these funds out the door and they don't know, not only do they have to be out the door, they have to be spent by December thirtieth. Um, I also know, again, the the county is also providing an additional two hundred thousand dollars to our small businesses. Uh, and small business assistance. Um. I think, um, Bill, I I maybe I'll turn it over to Bill to get Bill's thoughts on on that and how we can to best best serve those businesses.
So we did have communication with the theater in particular that you mentioned and and businesses that weren't open when we. Had councils directive to do the business loan fund and beef that up a little bit and get the word out. Uh, they were, all the businesses were communicated with based on our our database that we have, which is all the sales tax businesses. So. They had an opportunity, just like any other business, and some of them took advantage of that. Uh, they weren't. Open and so they had verifiable losses and that type of thing. Some participated in a loan program, some didn't feel comfortable doing a loan. They wanted to do a grant because they just didn't wanna, because they were already suffering losses and worried about when and if they could reopen. Um, they didn't want to enter into the loan world, so some of those went over to Region Ten for the county's grant money that was administered by Region Ten. And so I think they have been part of the project and the the money has been available to those that weren't weren't open as well.
Good.
But that's a a good point, especially with the theaters. They've been. You know, horrible for the theaters and Magic Circle is another great example. There are some businesses that just could not make it work to even try to be open, where. Most of our small businesses have done a really good job of trying to be creative and change the way they do things to make it, to make it work. And Dart's been there to help them, the county's been there to help them, everybody's worked as a good team. But we could, that could be part of uh another option uh to what Kendall just proposed. We could look at turning those loans that we did do into grant form. We could look at reaching out to ones that come to top of mind, like theaters. The only worry I would have, other than what just Kendall mentioned, would be. What if we forget some that we don't know about? Because there are, there are a lot of businesses in Montrose that I don't even know exist. And we hear about it every week, we find another small business, an entrepreneur, a onesie twosie type shop. That maybe they're working out of their home or they have a really small shared office space that not many people know about. And uh it, I just want to make sure that we were able to open it up in a way, put it in the general newspaper or something like that, where everybody's given equal opportunity to access.
I think that's really important, absolutely. I'm I'm not so much uh in favor of converting loans to grants. Because I think there would have been businesses who would have applied for a loan if they thought it would be converted to a grant. And I feel like. We have other ways to spend the money. Um. You know, the capacity is certainly an issue, but I know a nearby county is um is taking grants, applications currently for money to be spent. It through the end of of the year and um. And is is giving out three million dollars. So I feel like the capacity, I get it, there's a time sensitivity here. But we ought to be able to give out a hundred and eighty thousand dollars um in the next month. Given that, I know it has to be given out by us and spent. But if if a business or nonprofit is saying that they had a loss of of revenue in twenty twenty over twenty nineteen and that's an eligible CARES Act. Um, reason, then how how do they spend it? Do they then spend it on payroll? Or if we give them money because they lost revenue, how do they show that they spent the money before December thirtieth?
Thanks, Barbara. Yeah, so I guess it depends on. Let me go back because some of the grant applicants that applied. On our grant application, we asked if they had a verifiable loss and if they didn't, then that means that they have to spend those by December thirtieth. If they had a revenue loss, then they can simply put on the reporting form that we created that they had a revenue loss and this is how, and here's the documentation to show that. And then that's all they have to do.
Okay, that that makes more sense. And that's kind of how I understood that um how how that. How the money was being distributed is a verifiable loss, we can just write a check to a business or organization showing that. And they don't need to buy something with it.
Correct. No, they don't need to.
Because the buying something with it in the next thirty some days is is a challenge.
Right.
Okay.
My concern is that if we don't do the loan forgiveness, we're kind of setting ourselves in where we could potentially just lose this money. Because we have only thirty days basically to get this money out the door and spent. And I I got, I kind of like the idea of looking at the idea of converting those loans into grants. I see value in that too. I know and I understand your point, Barbara, that it's. There's a lot of businesses that probably would have applied had they known had that option, but we didn't know we had that option. I mean, this isn't something that we've suddenly changed our mind on.
Right. Uh, I see uh Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell has his hand up too.
One of the things that does uh concern me. As we're looking at what we're going to do with this, unfortunately, technology is moving forward. And I'm concerned that we need, how do we look at businesses that may be technically lost? And are no longer going to be uh pliable businesses. And you know, Matt, as I hate to point it out, uh a movie theater with today's streaming and everything that's available. Do we need to look at how we're going to uh evaluate the different businesses who are who are asking for help?
If I I can comment on that, I think, um, early on in the. First, I would say that movie theaters are a crucial component to a downtown of any community. I agree with you that things are going streaming, but nothing, and this is just my personal opinion, nothing. In the downtown can really replace the feeling of having a movie theater in your downtown. So I would always fight for, and the Main Street program would as well, keeping the foot traffic of a traditional movie theater. Um, but also, early on, when we did the loan and Region Ten helped us out with the administration. Dan Sinto, their loan officer, uh we talked specifically about. Just because you're eligible, doesn't make sense to give you money. Because if you're a small business that, there are some that don't have a business plan, they just kind of started up to try something. They're not really viable long term. The city has been a little more flexible. In our loan program, we we lent money to people that were a little um riskier entrepreneurs than Dan would at Region Ten under their traditional programming. Um, and so we talked about that as a team and and that those are definitely things we all talked about when we did the loan reviews. Um, Dan would analyze their financials, their credit piece. And then his job as the administrator of the loan program for us was to give us the red flags, just saying. You can loan this this business money, but this one's a really high risk of just going out of business, so you're probably not going to get paid back. Or this one has been longstanding, they're going to be here past COVID, it's a lower risk. And so all those things are taken into account in when we're doing things, Doug, and. We've erred as a city on being a little more flexible and risk-taking during COVID than some other entities might under a traditional loan program.
Counselor Anderson?
Well, I was wondering, um, the the dinner deal that we had, that the gift certificate for a meal. Seemed very successful and had a high utilization rate. Would there still be time to maybe do. Some money into a program like that and just put, uh, you know, it's got to be spent by the thirtieth of December and. It seemed to help people and restaurants both and um if there's extra money, maybe. Maybe that's an alternative we could explore quickly.
Anne, you you might be the best one to answer that. You worked more with the restaurant program than I did.
Sure. My understanding is that the Montrose Community Foundation in partnership with um. The Help for Hope program has kind of wrapped up that part of it and um, but it is certainly an idea and we can do it. And also, just to share, I think there is not a risk that we'll have to send money back. There are a lot of ways to spend this money, including um some other. Uses at the city. So um I just wanted to put that plug in that. Um, please know that we're not contemplating not deploying this money in our community. Um, for what Kendall said, you know, about helping nonprofits or the business ideas. Um, there are a lot of ways that we want to spend this money and can, and we are looking for your direction to make sure that if there's something you think is most important. Um, that we prioritize that with this remaining funding.
Absolutely. Counselor Frank?
I would have to think that something like the food pantry would be a good idea because we can purchase stuff and have it sent right away.
Uh, with the Help for Hope program with the meals, does buying a gift card to a restaurant count as an expenditure? Because if 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 that counts as an expenditure, I think, you know, we could bring that to the community foundation again and say, oh. We have to buy these and reinstitute the program by December thirtieth. As long as the people don't have to redeem their cards by the thirtieth, I think that might be a good option too.
What about, um, you know, one industry we haven't talked about, but we know was hard hit was our lodging industry in town. And um, and we know when we get back to having events and um and people travel through here and spending their money, that we want those. Businesses to still be viable into next year. So I wonder if there isn't a way to help out our uh that industry. Um. I do know one thing is that the CARES Act money has to be spent, like Kendall said, on on an actual thing. Or on a business that lost revenue and that um. Although we know a lot of restaurants are are really worried about what the winter will bring. The CARES Act money cannot be distributed in anticipation of upcoming hardship. So, um, and I think that's really hard because um because we know winter's going to be tough, but we have to look at. We have to look at what happened between March and I believe October, when you show a loss of revenue for the this particular batch of money. Um, any other council thoughts or questions? I think that given that we we don't vote again in exact, in a work session. And that council asks staff to distribute this money with our two cents and and they're getting our two cents here as we wind down the spending of this money. Um, I'll say this is your opportunity, council, to to throw in your two cents as staff finishes giving out this money in the next thirty days. So speak now, if you have an idea, a thought or a question.
So how much work would it take and what does our timeline look like if we tried to convert our uh loans to grants? Would we just forgive the loan? Is there paperwork involved with that? Is there a process? Would the applicant have to apply to have their loan forgiven?
And how many were there?
How many were there? And would we, would we have time to do that effectively in that thirty day window?
Bill, do you want to take that?
Sure. Uh, I would say we would definitely have time to do it. We have. Uh, now sent most people at the city to work from home, including the OBT. And with COVID, there's just not as much traffic, obviously, with the visitor center being closed and we have the OBT staff available to us. So we actually just talked about all the different options this morning. And I think we have staff that we could assign to reaching out to those who receive loans. And give them the the news that we would be converting it. And we can convert it with uh just a letter amending the agreement, unless Stephen has a more formal way he would want to do it. Um, where we would just change the terms of that agreement and and forgive the loan.
And how many of those were there and for how much total?
I would have to pull that up. I don't know off the top of my head.
I see Shani signed us.
Approximately twenty-three loans were given out.
And were they for five thousand each or were they varying amounts?
They were varying amounts. Let me look that up.
Believe they totaled about a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars.
Which is about exactly how much we have left, is that?
That's correct, approximately.
We have a little less, I think, um, available, but we have gained revenue on the side of uh. Some of our reimbursements for staff time and those types of things. And we've also uh had some savings due to transitional. Positions and that type of thing. So I think overall, uh, we would be able to fund the extra twenty thousand or something like that if if we were a bit short, if that's what you chose to do.
Any other final comments from uh council as staff takes this all into consideration? And and again, we did give them discretion. Um, I appreciate their coming back and checking in with us. But we're not formally voting on any of this. Okay.
One thing related that I just want to give an update, sorry, Madam Mayor. I don't want to forget though. We met with OBT staff this morning and I gave them the go ahead to. Expand the Montrose Bucks promotion a little bit. It's been so well received in the business community. That they're going to run out of cards. And uh, I haven't told Chaney this yet, so she'll probably shoot me later, but um I gave them the go ahead to add another ten thousand. Uh, worth of the promotional dollars to keep people shopping local and help with small businesses in the community. Um, because we don't have enough cards available, it'll be show proof of your receipt, signed by the business. And as soon as we get cards, we will mail you your card. And that will keep a huge influx from coming into the the closed visitor center as well. So kind of two reasons for that. But just wanted to mention that we are adding ten thousand to that promotion because we have.
Is that something that qualifies for the CARES Act spending or no?
I don't think so, unless Kendall came up with a.
I'd have to check. It could potentially be under like an, there's an economic development category, but I would have to look into it to see.
It's very focused and undoubtedly helps our local businesses, so I just brought that up. In case it's a way to.
We'll check into that. I hadn't thought of that.
I I also wanted to share, um, not, yeah, excuse me, Mayor Biden and Council, that the nonprofits and child cares, they're very appreciative of the funding that they've received. Um, so please know that, you know, these funds are being used for a good cause in our community and and really. Strengthening our nonprofits so that they can continue to do their work and the childcare providers. Um, so I have received some thank you letters or or emails from them. Um, so they're very appreciative of those funds. Continue to be able to to be here in Montrose, so just wanted to pass that along.
Would it be possible for us to get a list of those people so we have some idea who has benefited from this?
Sure, I can certainly, uh, I have a list and I can send that to you for sure.
That'd be great. Except my dad should know that.
Yep.
Great, thank you. And uh, maybe after, um, maybe after this winter, we'll be in a position to um. Be looking at ways a second round of federal funding can help our community, knowing that I think. Um, this winter isn't going to be easier on our local small businesses than the summer was. In fact, it may be more difficult. So. So please continue to shop locally and support your, your local businesses here in Montrose. They're going to need all the help they can get, I think, in the upcoming months. Okay, anything else on this one? And if not, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Great, thanks staff for all the hard work on, and distributing the CARES Act money and figuring out ways that that can best benefit our community. Okay, our supplemental budget ordinance. I will ask the city's finance director, Shani Wittenberg, to tell us about this. We do this every December at the end of the year. So give us a little overview of what 2020's supplemental budget ordinance looks like. You're muted. Shani?
Sorry about that, my, my picture was on. So yeah, good morning again, Mayor Bynum and City Council. The supplemental budget does come to you all in December each year, and it looks differently every year, just kind of depends on what we were aware of during the original budget versus what we actually spent. So 2020 is definitely one of those years that it's a large supplemental budget or appropriating funds, additional funds for the 2020 expenditures. And a lot of it has to do with the CARES Act. So I'm page forty-seven of the packet and I'll share it with you here, just one second. Here we go. We, can you see that? Okay. I don't know why it always looks so weird when I, is that better?
That's better, that's a little bigger on our screens, it's good, we can see it.
Okay, great, all right. So in the packet, I do believe this, this row here might have gotten cut off, but this other funding, under other funding funded by grants or CARES Act. So you'll see a large number in this for the general fund. And that's a lot to do with those daycare and nonprofit grants that we've given out under the CARES Act monies. Also, in the general fund, we've got property purchases that we didn't necessarily anticipate in the 2020 original budget. Would get road alignment would be an exception to that. We did know that we might be purchasing some property, but we don't budget for it just to keep our, keep the negotiations fair. So moving into these grants, Fund 202 is where we expend monies that are passed through the city. So these monies are grant monies that are, were passed on to the Center for Mental Health for a roof and the school district for the Centennial Middle School Playyard. And you will note that that playground actually is unique. I believe in Colorado, maybe, I don't know how far it goes, but to where it is ADA accessible, there's a lot of ADA pieces to that playground. The next two lines there are really due to COVID. We did not anticipate loaning out a lot of money in 2020 just because that program, and we get one or two a year. I went ahead and supplemented the entire downtown Development Authority or the Downtown Improvement Fund by that max amount. That also covered some all-point transit window wraps that we were unaware of last year and then the crosswalk improvements. The Opportunity Loan Fund and the Montrose Opportunity Loan Fund, those both are the loans that we gave out for COVID-19. Oh, sorry, I must have copied that second one for COVID-20. Or just a premonition that we've got twenty coming up. Just kidding. The Urban Renewal Authority, that project is improving the Uncompagri River. And we did receive two grants, one from Fishing is Fun and the other from Car Water Conservation. And that $350,000 is just half of what those grants total because the $825,000 is half of the project that will be done in 2020. Supplementing the Special Benefit Fund for the amphitheater design, that was something that we didn't know would happen in 2020, there was a timing delay on that. The Debt Services, Public Safety, we weren't, we knew we were going to have, probably have some sort of a loan, but we didn't know how much it was going to be. So that supplemental for the General Debt Service is for the Public Safety Loan. And then the Special Improvements Revolving Fund, that's really just paying the county for what they collect from, for us, for our, the Riverwood and then the Niagara, that has one more year on it. The Capital Facility Capital Improvements Fund is for the conceptual design and traffic and environmental studies for anticipation of building a new public works facility in the future. And then the Water Fund is really supplemented for the sewer reservoir improvements. As you know, throughout the year, those expenditures have been, those projects have been bigger than we anticipated. And then the treated water from Project Seven, we're going to pay them a little bit more than we anticipated, and that's really due to the dry summer that we had. And you can see that in our revenues under the Water Fund. In, in October, through October, eighty-three percent of the year was complete and ninety-seven point three percent of the revenues had been collected. So we are going to see an increase in our revenues as well from it being so dry. The Trash and Recycling Fund is being supplemented for the new truck and employee that we added in 2020 due to growth. We did not anticipate the growth that we had in 2020. So that's, needs to be supplemented. And then the last two are, two of our internal service funds, and they both were very instrumental with the CARES Act money, like the IS Fund with all the technology and the computers that we purchased. And then the Facility Fund with the disinfectant and the contracts to clean in 2020 due to the pandemic. So with that, and this will actually be, and it is included in the packet for tomorrow night's meeting for your first approval of the ordinance. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you all may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for the thorough explanation, going through each of those line by line. That's really helpful. And an ordinance takes two votes, so we'll vote on it tomorrow and then again on the fifteenth, right? And then it'll be a done deal, okay?
Correct, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next item on our agenda this morning is General City Council Discussion. Council members, does anyone have any particular item that they want to talk about today or that they want to see on an upcoming work session? Or needs staff to give them some more information about? Okay. How about staff, any managers or department heads? And lastly, we'll turn it over to the city manager's office for any kind of an update. So anyone? Nobody's jumping in, okay, we're good. Bill or Anne, any comments from where you said today or is any, anything we need to know about? Yep.
Mayor Bynum and City Council members, I'll give you an update, just a change from the last council meeting, which is that City Hall is still open right now. So if people want to come into City Hall and pay water bills or ask a question, City Hall's open, but most of our staff are working remotely. So we're all available by email and phone and our city operations have not changed or ceased. We're just working a little differently right now. So you can contact us using the information that you have. And if people don't have our contact information, it's available online. An easy way to get departmental updates is to go to cityofmontrose.org/covid19, to get updated information about our operations. Our visitor center right now is not open to visitor center services. There are brochures there if people need information, but our Visit Montrose website is really great. So if people are looking for information that they would have otherwise come in person to the visitor center for, they can go online and start there or contact our staff. And we can, again, help remotely and on the phone and send information through email and also in the mail if needed.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, then if there's nothing else, we can wrap up this work session. I don't want to cut anyone off if someone wanted to say something, but we do have a city council meeting tomorrow night. And, and we also have the opportunity for questions and updates at the end of our council meeting, like we always do. I'm not seeing anyone who's jumping in. So we'll wrap up, we'll wrap up our work session today. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and for all the hard work that's going on. And we'll see you at tomorrow evening's city council meeting, thank you.